Good afternoon and welcome to the April meeting of the Murfreesboro Historic Zoning Commission. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Linda Anderson.
Here.
Gabe Backlin.
Here.
David Becker.
Here.
Deborah Belcher. Rick Cantrell. Paul Cross.
Here.
Jim Thompson.
Here.
Mary Mae White. Kurt Wayne.
Here.
We do have a call, so I call this meeting to order. Everyone should have received in their packets some minutes of the regular meeting held on March the 15th. Are there any changes or additions or corrections that we need to do?
I have one correction, Mr. Chairman, on page two.
Okay.
About three fourths of the way down, a single sentence, we have to change the gender on "Ishad." It has "Mr." and it has "Ms."
Absolutely. Anything else?
Can you say it? Can you tell me where that is again?
It's the third paragraph from the bottom, but it's only a single sentence, page two.
There you go.
Mr. Ishad, Ms. Ishad.
Ms. Okay.
Anything else on this set of minutes?
Page two, okay.
Make a recommendation, will you approve the minutes? Would that one change?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion regarding the minutes as prepared? If not, the Chair would welcome, then everyone saying aye, those that accept the minutes as revised?
Aye.
Those opposed? Then those minutes will be recorded. There's also a second set of minutes for April the 5th for a special subcommittee meeting. And for that, we had David and Paul present at that meeting and others, I think, were there as well, but did anyone find any corrections in this? Any additions or corrections?
Make a motion that we approve as submitted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor accepting the minutes as prepared, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Then, thank you very much. We have both sets of minutes then approved. Thank you, Brenda. Robert, what is our first bit of business today?
On the agenda, we have under new business, we have 1102 East Main Street. The applicant is Jim Thomas. He was, is requesting to install hardy board materials on the detached garage behind his residence. I talked to him last Friday, and he said that he was going to be out of town Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, so he's not going to be able to be here for the meeting. And I told him that if you could just send somebody, a representative or an agent or somebody that could talk to about his, his business, then we could talk about it, but I don't know that anybody is here.
Is there anyone in the audience who's here to represent Mr. Thomas? If not, then should we enable this to another time or go ahead and move forward on it?
Well, I make a recommendation because it's really not a complex matter.
Uh huh.
And we go ahead and entertain it.
Okay. What questions or thoughts does the commission have on this particular approach?
Let me just go ahead and explain a little bit for the audience.
Yeah, go ahead and explain. Of course, Robert.
Mr. Thomas is, is reworking the house and the detached garage behind the house. And Representative of the Building and Coats Department and I met with Mr. Thomas out on the property last, last year. And we explained to him that any changes to the property, whether it be materials or additions or anything like that, would need to come from the Historic Commission. And at that time, he wasn't sure what kind of material he was going to put on his detached garage. It was, it previously was asbestos shingle siding, so we knew that they weren't going to use that. So I told him that before you, before you do something, you need to come from the Historic Commission. And about a month ago, we noticed that, that the garage had had some material put on there. And I went out there and asked him about it, and he said that it was hardy plank material. And I told him that time that he needed to get approval for this before you went ahead and completed it. So that's the reason why it's on the agenda this, you know, for this, to view it this month. In addition to what he's doing at the garage, he's, he's doing a lot of major work to the house on the inside and to the outside. He's, he's painted some things, he's, he's reworked the stucco that's on the front porch. But everything done to the house has been maintenance, it's been replacing with the same materials. The only thing that had changed so far is, is the siding on the detached garage behind the house. So that's why it's come before the commission today.
Okay, thank you, Robert. I believe, I've visited this particular property before, so I'll recuse myself from voting on this, but was there not siding, the studs, then siding, then the asbestos shingle on the outside or historically?
Uh, I know there was asbestos shingle siding, but I don't know what was, there was studs behind it. I don't know if there's another, a layer of something.
Well, there had to be some kind of something to put the materials on that we did see. There had to be some kind of substrate, and I believe to have been siding.
A sublayer of something.
But since this is a next tier change that everybody driving by sees, that this is before us today, what questions does the commission have regarding this issue?
Is this the same house that came with the request to put a anti-seam roof on it?
No.
It's not just the same style?
It's two doors down from Davis Market. Or three doors, maybe.
Right at the corner on Main Street.
Second, main and second.
Second, yeah.
I believe the one that you're thinking of, Paul, had a hip roof with a two pitch, with a kick at the bottom.
Right, well, this one's kind of got a kick.
And this is a bungalow sort of thing with a porch, having a bit of a kick on the roof.
Well, would have been nice to have Mr. Thomas come in before he put the cement board siding on. Regardless of that fact, asbestos had to go, and the cement board, this v. hardy board is, is an approved material for our zones, so I have no problem with it myself.
I agree with you, Dave, and given the choices that would be available to him long-term, that probably gives him the least maintenance and a texture and a shadow line that's actually better than what was there before, so.
What is the lifespan of hardy board or hardy plank or, and what, what kind of maintenance does it require?
It has to be painted. It's a perlited concrete. It's fairly dangerous to work with. The cutting, the dust is difficult. It's one of the kind of thing that, that I would not want me around while it's being done, but if it's painted and kept painted, then it will react as good as wood. If, if it's not painted and it's able to absorb water, then it can fall, can freeze and fall. So it has to be kept painted.
Similar to, remember the material that was being used a few years back, Drivit?
Yes.
So if, if the paint should peel and it gets moisture in it, then it's going to come apart, so, okay.
Well, I have some of that material that I put on in 2002 on the 112 South Manny House, and painted it at that time, and there's, it's just absolutely no problem at all. I've not, not had to even repaint it.
Holds paint well.
Yeah.
It comes in both a textured, weathered wood surface. Do you happen to know what this is?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't.
I believe that the asbestos siding had a sort of textured appearance to it, but I have to say, when I look at it, I think it looks, I think it looks much better than it was.
How long has this kind of material been manufactured? When was it first?
It's been around, honestly, no, but it's been around fifteen, twenty years.
I don't know, I started hearing a lot about it, about, you know, renovated the big house in 98. This just got into 2000, I started hearing.
It replaced Drivit, then, because the Drivit controversy in the 90s.
Well, the Drivit, the Drivit was a real problem.
Yeah.
They're sort of different materials altogether, because it's really like the styrofoam ice chest is the way I look at it. If you build a house and cover it with this styrofoam, you're basically keeping all the vapors inside, and that's what's causing the rot, and there's a national lawsuit against Drivit, as I understand it.
I'm not saying it's similar, I mean, I'm not saying that it's, it just came around, around that same time that Drivit was going away as a siding material, both of which were designed to replace wood, I think, as a, because of the maintenance costs or perceived maintenance costs, so.
It holds paint better than wood because you don't have the, as much thermal expansion or the, the oil that are wood that can sometimes create a problem with bonds. Whereas you'd get three to five years out of a standard, high-quality paint on wood, you're going to get longer than that on this.
Robert, you mentioned that he was intending, I believe, to replace the windows as well, but it looks like the one on the main part of the building is, is an original building, original window.
You talking about the house?
The main strut, the garage.
Okay.
As you face the street there, it looks like that window is existing.
Uh, I think, one of the pictures of the garage, it shows.
It's a six over six window.
Okay.
I'm, I'm thinking of this picture here.
Mm-hmm. Six over six. And it looks like it's the same.
Looks like he's replaced the door but kept the windows. And also, I'd note that he's gone from a three-tab regular shingle to an architectural shingle in both the house and the garage.
Mm-hmm.
Which we, we've allowed that kind of shingle in the past. I mean, to me, as I look at both the shingle and the garage siding, I think they're all fine.
Will I make a motion that we approve the siding as submitted?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion regarding the siding on the garage? If not, all those in favor accepting the modification as proposed by Mr. Thomas, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Then it is approved. If you please pass it on then to Mr. Thomas, we surely would appreciate it. Robert, our next bit of business is a, a public hearing regarding the proposed changes to the documents of which our commission is bound to follow and enforce. And we had hoped by having our special committee meeting that we would go through and discuss some of the highlights of those changes, and I believe you, the city has advertised that, that those changes are available for anyone to come look at.
Right, we, we advertised in the newspaper, I think it was about a week ago, last Sunday, and we haven't had anybody to date come up to the counter and, and look at the, at the documents that we've advertised. This public hearing is going to be about all the changes that the subcommittee says have, has looked at the past couple of months, and we reviewed them at the last Historic Zoning Commission. And I'll be happy to go ahead and start review. And most of these changes, a lot of these changes are typos and grammatical type changes that the legal department is really good at.
Yes. And we thank you all for that.
And the first one I want to start with is Article Four. It's, it's this one right here.
Okay.
Historic zoning district, excuse me. And this is out of the zoning ordinance. We actually did not make any changes in this, even though we reviewed it at the subcommittee level, so I included it in your package. So there were no changes to this at all.
Great, thank you.
The next one is the application for certificate of appropriateness. It's this one here. And we kind of reworked the application to make this easier for the applicant and staff to get as much information as we can out for the Historic Commission to, to look at during the meeting. And the first page, there, I don't see, other than the revised date on top, whenever we finish the revisions, we'll put a revised date on top to make sure everybody knows when we did this. On the second page, some changes, removing Historic Zoning Commission, just Historic Zoning part of the commission, to leave it commission, leaving, removing Historic, Murfreesboro Historic Zoning Commission at the end of that paragraph, and then other, there are others, Historic Zoning and Historic. We just scratched through because the commission is, it applies to the commission. And likewise, on page three, we removed Historic out of the commission, just left it commission. And the application itself, it, it will allow, like to say, more detailed work on, on what the person is going to be doing to his property. If you have any questions about this, I'll be happy to answer them.
No, I just wanted to, to note that I think you made this much more clear on the application now, Mr. Lewis, is that all drawing, drawings, elevations, and site plans must be to scale, because we've had problems with that in the past. And also, you've, you've made it in bold print that they must include documentation that clearly illustrates the proposed exterior appearance of the project. And so hopefully, that will eliminate people coming here without anything to show us. So I think that's really, that's really good, that's really important.
If there aren't any question, any questions about the rest of this, I'll, we'll move on to the next one, is.
I have just one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I, I think I might have been the one mentioning to have the revision date. I would just say form revised rather than the word revised, you know, so that people know that this form was revised on that date, or you could put it at the bottom of the page, or, you know, on page one where it says revised, March 2011, I don't know that it's clear that that revision is referring to the form itself.
Okay.
That's what I mean, you know, like if you see a state document, oftentimes down on the bottom, it'll say, you know, printed at, blah, blah, blah. That would be a place where, typically on forms, it'll say form revised, the, the form revision date is, is sort of a, a subscript or, you know, like a footnote. It's just, just a thought.
Yeah. Any other comments?
No.
The next one, like I say, is the guidelines for alterations and additions. And again, we have the revised date, March 2011. We can, we can fix that. On the first page, we just changed some of these, like I say, are really repetitive, repetitive. We capitalized Architectural Review Board and the Commission in all places on page one. Page two, changed the name of East Main Historic Zone to East Main Historic District in order to keep, keep it flowing, to make, to say the same throughout all the documents that we have. And the dates below in that paragraph, below that, from 1865 to 1940, well, we actually had some houses that are dated pre, pre-1865, so we found that they were from the 1830s through the 1940s. And following the Greek Revival, we capitalized design, D for design. Farther on down, removing Proposed Historic Zone, because it's there, it's been there for 26 years, so we're just going to call it Historic District. Moving on to page three, at the very bottom, just the Historic Zoning Commission is going to be the Commission now.
Robert, in the interest of not losing our audience out there going to get something to eat and a bathroom break and that kind of thing, if you'd like to skip over where we just, you know, capitalized the word commission or Historic Zoning to just commission, feel free to, because I think we need to get to the meat of it so that we can get through this timely.
Okay.
That's a suggestion.
Sure. And the following, page four, just removing Historic Zoning and Commission, capitalizations, leaving Commission just as is, leaving it, in the last paragraph of the, one, well, one, two, second paragraph under Roman numeral four, the last paragraph ends with, also, we will provide as much guidance on new design as possible through the donated time of Commission members and city staff. Under purpose, Roman numeral five, nothing real major other than capitalization of, of the words Historic Commission, Historic Zoning. On page five, under Roman numeral six, we removed, we added the definite, the name alteration under the definition, so that's just an added word to that, defining alteration. Under general principles, under B, under Roman numeral five, we talked about proposals for exterior work to be done on. We removed public as far as facades. If we can see it from the street, we just call it, just, you know, work done on facades, visible from the public right-of-way. And they shall be more carefully viewed than other facades. Under the next paragraph, the distinguishing original qualities or character of a building, structure, or site in its environment should not be destroyed. The removal or alteration of any original or historic, historical material or of any other significant distinctive architectural features shall be avoided. We added those, that phrases, those phrases in that paragraph so we could explain, you know, the originality of the material, and if there's any other significant architectural features, we wanted to add that. And the same with the, the next paragraph, second sentence stating, alterations that have no historical basis which seek to create an earlier appearance other than the original construction shall be discouraged. That's what we want to change it to. On page six, we're just scratching through additions in the middle of the page, contemporary design for alterations, we just left out additions because they're an alteration. Same with the next line below, and the next paragraph also, whenever possible, alterations to structures shall be done in such a manner that if such alterations were to be removed in the future, essential form and integrity of the structure would be impaired. Page seven, under Roman numeral C, under, under two, the size and the shape of original dormers shall, should be maintained. Dormers should not be introduced where none existed originally. And then we've added, the original size, shape, material, and design of chimneys should be maintained. All masonry penetrations through or above the roof should be maintained. We wanted to add that.
That was related to like parapets and items such as that.
Right. Under Roman numer, no, under number three, under porches, under the third paragraph, the enclosing of front and side porches visible from public right-of-way is inappropriate. We added side porches and visible from the public right-of-way, which wasn't there earlier. Under four, under windows, we added type, type of windows. The original type, size, and shape of windows should be maintained. And the next line, the next sentence, I mean, we added muntens. The original number and arrangement of panes should be maintained. The size, the width of muntens should be maintained. Under the fourth paragraph, painted aluminum storm windows and screens, and we removed and blind stop windows, they're more appropriate than shiny raw milled, mill finished storm windows and screen. And then, page eight, under number five, under doors, of the second paragraph, original transoms, side lights, and doors. It was just a grammatical error. Doors should be maintained. Two lines down, two sentences down, we talked about blind stops again. We just removed blind stops from the painted aluminum doors, storm doors and screen doors. On the next page, page nine, under seven, on the one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph from the bottom, painting of brick, we added brick to this. Painting of brick, stone, the painting of brick or stone unless originally painted is inappropriate. And the next sentence, under wood, we added, we added cement fiberboard siding similar in texture, size, and weather to the original material may be approved, which we, like we did today.
And this is like the previous thing, the hardy plank?
On page 10, top paragraph, replacement stucco should be consistent with the original in size, direction, texture, and dimension, which is thickness, we added texture. And the third paragraph, in some circumstances, the use of synthetic covering materials such as cement fiberboard may be appropriate. We added such as cement fiberboard. So this will be appropriate for duplicate replacement materials are not available. Under color, the Historic Zoning, we just left out, the, the second sentence would read, the Commission will provide advice on appropriate historic paint colors upon request. And that would be all on that page. Page 11, the preferred type of fencing is formal, it's just a typo we took out of, so it should read formal wrought iron, wood, or brick. And following along, we remove generally wood, generally wood or chain link fences on the front of the lot should be avoided. We removed that and added chain link fences are inappropriate. Under D, just about the middle way through the page, under lighting, the original light fixtures should be maintained wherever possible. When retention is not reasonably possible, replacement fixtures should be in keeping with the collective characteristics of the property and surroundings. We just added that. Under Roman numeral seven, under new construction, we provided the, the word new construction as the definition for that. And like we did before, under B, the guidelines, we just, we added the capital for that. The second paragraph, what I'm talking about, the, the facades visible from the public right-of-way, we added visible from the public right-of-way. Front and street-related elevations of proposals for new construction shall be more carefully reviewed than other facades. Then the next paragraph on the very bottom, it talked about construction in the late, well, it was early 19th century, early 19th through the late 20th centuries. And then, going over to page 13, talking about demolition, we provided the word demolition for the definition, and everything else on that page is just typos, grammatical. Page 14, it's just changing the capital to of District, removing the little D and making it a big D. it a big D. That would be all, same with page 15. So, is there any questions on guidelines for alterations, additions, and demolitions and removals?
I have a question on page five, second paragraph from the bottom, and it says, alterations that have no, it's the second sentence in that paragraph, alterations that have no historical basis and which seek to create an earlier appearance other than the original construction shall be discouraged, and I think we might, might be thinking about earlier or later, or maybe saying inconsistent with the original construction. I mean, you know, you could put a 21st century feature on a 19th century house, or you could put a 17th century feature on a 19th century house, both would be inappropriate, or inconsistent with the design, I don't, so that you don't just oppose those types of architectural designs that were of an earlier period but also of a later period.
I believe though typically, Paul, you can correct me, but I believe that the Secretary of Interior Standards says that additions should be indicative of the time in which they're built.
Right.
I see what you mean, yeah.
What we were trying to say is if you had a Greek Revival house, you wouldn't put something much earlier on to make it confuse when was the house built, but modern additions should be indicative of the time that they're built and accept those changes, but you don't want to make it look earlier, and that was the thinking in that.
I see.
That addition, that change.
It might pose some questions, I think. The idea is, so that you, the idea is, the intent of that guideline is to show that the addition is not contemporaneous with the main body of the house, correct? That is, it was not constructed at the same time as the main body of the house, an addition generally will not be perceived to be the original, original part of the structure, although in some cases, we've seen some additions that were bigger than the original house, but, so I think the intent is so that you, a student or somebody looking at the architecture can tell the difference between what was the original and what is the addition.
Yes.
Not so much that the addition be from a particular time period, it's just that it's different. And so you can distinguish between the-
The difference of it.
Right. So that, so when someone tries to replicate perfectly the time period of, you have to say a house that was built in 1835, and an addition that's put on in 2010, you would not construct it exactly like the 1835 piece was done.
Well, I think what we're saying, what I, I, we, I think I was the one that suggested this, is that I, it's all up to interpretation, but certainly the Secretary of Interior Standards does not want the addition to look earlier than the original construction, they want it to be indicative of what the time period is now, but I see more and more additions being made that look, are compatible with the original construction, and therefore it's typically interpreted maybe wrongfully, but it's more, it's closer to looking like it was original. Just not earlier, but later's fine, just not earlier.
Yeah.
And that was the intent there. I mean, Paul, do you have any?
No, I was just thinking that the, the-
I'm tougher to answer.
The discussions when the standards were written were such that the intent was that changes through time have achieved significance in their own right, and in fact, there might be historical associations or events that took place long after the original construction that in importance override the original construction. So they, we would not want those changes taken out, we would not want them pulled away in favor of getting back to the original appearance. So, now, if you had a situation where, we're talking, here we're talking about an alteration where a change is being made that, my assumption is, it's not the result of storm damage or a fire or something, somebody's making a choice to take the house back to what it looked like when it was built. And if the accumulation of additions over time better represent the environment and the district as a whole, I mean, then, then we would, we would discourage that. Because the district, the importance of the district overrides the importance of the individual buildings, so that you've got a constant theme of time and place in that, in that district. We might word this, try to craft this a little bit different, but I understand, Jim, what you're, what you're saying.
I mean, to give an example, I was thinking if someone had an 1880's house and they wanted to put a porch on that was never there, you wouldn't want them to put a 2011 designed all steel porch with glass roof and all that, it would look inappropriate, I would think. But I think you could go back as early as the 1880's on that particular house and put in a period style porch, it would be fine, I wouldn't want to put one much earlier than that, so that was the reason we put, I suggested that, going in there.
I think the key is, you know, what is the exact language in the standards, in the Secretary of Standards, because it may shed some light on that question.
I don't know what the exact-
Derek Tider, let me tie her in this. It would basically say that if it had achieved significance in a long time, that you couldn't remove it.
How much time do we have on approving these? This is a public hearing today?
This is a public hearing, yeah.
And, and how many public hearings does it go through?
Well, just one for the-
One here and then to the planning commission. I would just suggest that we take a look at what the Secretary of Standards see and see if it's compatible with this, and it may say earlier or it may not, and I'm fine with however it goes, I just think it's worth looking at.
Okay, we can look at it. Moving from guidelines to the rules of procedure, I sent an email out to all planning, or historic commission members and Mary May, that even as late as yesterday, we were adding some more changes to this document, and you received a copy of the new rules of procedures, if you would just throw away the other one that you had before, because the new one has everything that that had, plus some, some other small changes that we come across, and they're gender based, like I say, the legal department's very good in what they do, because they found this late, and we just attempted to correct this before the public hearing.
But sometimes it takes us two or three reviews of the document to catch everything, and the prior reviews, we had missed some, I guess what I would call, non-gender neutral language from the older document. We have, and we endeavor to have gender neutral language in all of our city documents, ordinances, and everything, we're probably a ways yet from perfect, but we are cleaning them up as we go, and as part of that, we do, we try to avoid the he, she, his, her, which is very cumbersome, and rather than saying, referring here to the chair and that he, she may do this, we just go back to the chair may make an appointment, that kind of thing. So all of the he, she, his, her changes in there are of that nature. And sometimes you can just take it out and say the chair, other times you have to sort of restructure the sentence or the phrase to make it make sense, but those, that's what all of the late changes were that we came in with yesterday that came out today.
So beginning on page one, they include some of these changes, his, her, and that first paragraph under Roman numeral two, under the commission, number A, about the third line, if available, a member of the planning commission at the time of, get rid of his and her, the appointment, that's where we rephrase that. And likewise, the rest of the first page is with that. Second page is-
In the prior revisions, we changed chairman to chair and vice chairman to vice chair, but missed the his, her, so we caught that later.
On the second page is the same thing, chairman to chair, his to her, his and hers to vice chair, and likewise. And that's about the same, the same on second page. Page three, Roman numeral three, Tennessee Code provides, and the quotations from that, same with the first and second paragraph. Under B, just district, just, you know, grammatical and spelling changes, that's all on the, on page three. Page four, same way, going on down, just removing historic zoning, under Roman numeral four, under meetings, all meetings of the commission. And that's just going all the way through page four like that. Page five, it starts out, chair, under G, about halfway down, review criteria, we removed some things, and it should read, in reviewing applications for certificates of appropriateness, the commission shall take into account design guidelines adopted for the historic district in which it lies, in which the property lies. Under H, just capitalizations. Page six, under the letter, number two, his and her thing again, and we had a semicolon after the end of that, we changed to a period because it's the end of a, of a letter, and the same with the letter I, just a period at the end of a sentence. Everything else is grammatical in nature on that page. Page seven, under Roman, or the letter M, record keeping, planning and engineering department under number one, under the record keeping. Roman numeral five, halfway down on page seven is economic hardship. Historic zoning, historic removal on that, going to page eight. Page nine, the commission, on the first paragraph, the last sentence, this form, we're talking about the applications for the historic commission, this form outlines the work approved by the commission, and it must be presented to the planning and engineering department before a permit is issued by the building and codes department for work involving property in the historic district. We just added building and codes department. And that's, that's about it on page nine. Page 10, on the very top, the commission or an appropriate member of the planning staff located at the planning and engineering department. I think here we're talking about submitting an application, they'll submit it to the planning and engineering department. Under C, number one, under D, under number one also, it's C1D, the very last sentence, or the paragraph, let's do that, scaled site plan should be submitted if applicable, showing proposed fences, walks, drives, buildings, et cetera, with details or photos of any fence or wall types and sizes proposed, then we add, principal structures or other significant features on adjacent properties should be shown. And we got, we removed the, within 12 feet of the property line. The purpose of this is so we can have something to look at the principal structure on each side of the principal structure to look at the scale and size and to compare it with, so that'll help.
Yeah, this may be almost the first substantive change in this document-
I would agree.
-where we've requiring principal structures on both sides and other significant features, because they're, we're not sure what that is, but, and don't know how, can't really describe it because we don't know what it might be, but something that is significant and visible from the right of way, we would like to have it on the application so that it can, so that we can know how the, everything relates to each other there. And we added that in several places then here where we're talking about the application, what the application should contain, and we, again, rather than just adjacent structures, it's principal structures and other significant features that, on the adjoining properties that should be shown.
And on that same topic, Jim, you're the one who brought that up, and I thought that was a very good point, and you gave some examples when we were in the meeting.
Well, I think it was actually Paul or someone else, but, but we talked about the principal structures for sure, and then someone had brought up about a fountain or a tree or something like that.
Oh, yes, that's right.
I think it was Paul. I think it's good to know what is on the other side, that we protect that as well.
It's all about maintaining the integrity of the district as a whole. It's, that's the intent.
And that's going to take place for new construction as well as alterations in the next number down below. Principal structures or other significant features. On number three, for signs, we want to see scale drawings showing the material, we're adding material to all the others that was there, colors, letter styles, supports, and lighting is applicable. For fences or walls, there's walls in historic district. Drawings or photos of the, of the fence or wall showing its height and materials, on page 11, finishing up. We want to see a site plan showing the location of the fence or wall. Under five, we talk again about showing the principal structures or other significant features on adjacent properties, we just want to have a good feel for what's on either side of the, of the principal structure. So that will be included for game courts, pools, decks, terraces. Under number six on page 11, for demolition or removal permits, we want to see photographs of all facades, buildings, or other structures or other significant features is to be included in what we're looking at for demolition purposes. And that would be all on page 11. On page 12, it starts on, actually, it starts on page 11, so, the commission shall within 30 days following the availability of required data, issue to the building and codes department a certificate of appropriateness, if the application is approved with or without attached conditions, or the direct refusal of a building permit, providing the grounds for refusal are stated in writing. We want to make sure that if something is denied, then it is going to be put down, the reason for denial.
Great.
That's in our zoning ordinance provisions already, and it talks about approving or denying, and we just, I felt it would be good to put in the rules to remind us and anyone else that if it's denied, we need to put it in writing and state the reasons for it.
Under letter, go ahead, no, under G, any changes to an application, originally we had the signature of the applicant, but we're removing that because we're going to have documentation provided in the minutes of the meeting. to have documentation provided in the minutes of the meeting. So it'll be in the minutes of the meeting, in addition to the letter state, to the letter to the applicant following the meeting. But it'll be shown in the minutes of the meeting, any changes made. Under L, at the, close to the bottom of the page, it says, "Both the building and codes, building and codes department and planning and engineering department inspect work. In cases of noncompliance with the approved plans, the suggested steps are as follows." And then we, we outline the steps. We contact the owner about the problem. And number two, it's just a typo. So we, if there is a problem, we contact the owner to start the process. And on the last page, number 13, page 13, under five, refer to the file to the city attorney for further enforcement action. Instead of just placing it in a transfer court, we may take it somewhere else. Any questions on that? The last two are the brochures that we have, the architectural review brochure. This is not actually an official document. It's something that we have come up with the past couple of years to distribute to new people in the, in the historic zone, in historic district, and we're just tweaking it a little bit. And most of these probably are spelling and grammatical type things. In the second page, or the second paragraph, on page one, it says, "Reviews all applications for building alteration." We're adding alterations in there also.
I think, other than the typos and capitalizations, and being consistent of whether we call it the commission, or the zone, or the department, or the whatever, just those kinds of consistencies, the only substantive changes are changes that we've just talked about in the prior two documents that we picked up here. And for instance, the statement on the second page of this one, that principal structures and significant other features should be shown. We've made those kinds of changes to make both this document and the next document consistent with the, with what they are intended to surprise. So be happy, we can go through all of these. I don't know that we really need to-
I think they're similar. For instance, like signs, we added material, we talked about that earlier.
Right.
And then for fences, we added walls. So those are all consistent with what we've already previously presented. So I don't really see necessarily a reason to go through that. Perhaps the only thing about an item D for fences or walls, item three, samples of materials to be used, and samples proposed paint or stain color. We've added that. We want to see what the color is. But other than that, it's, it's all just knitting them all together to be consistent.
Right.
So I don't see any other items really to go over, unless there's something the commission sees.
And I think the same with the Q and A brochure, that's the final item here.
I really, in looking at this, I would agree, there's really nothing in there that's, it's all consistent with previous discussions, just doing our homework, getting it all tidied up. Are there any questions then by the commission regarding these documents? We've certainly spent a good bit of time as a group, subcommittee, and then Brenda typing. God bless you, Brenda, for getting us through this. I'm sure it was a lot of involvement for you, and we do sincerely thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Many of us are very thankful for word processors and computers to a royal manual typewriter.
And we thank the legal department, and you, Robert, for going through this, and just getting our home, you know, doing our own homework and getting this tidied up, so that we can go to the next generation to have these documents as clear as they can be, and reflect modern approaches and changes, like adding the hardy plank, cement fiber board, that we have accepted recently, or for many years, actually, now on projects, instead of using wood siding. We've allowed this. We just want to try to bring this to today's approach. So we thank you for that. Is it time then, I've never done a public hearing or conducted that, we have some members from the audience. Would you all like to come forward and address the commission? Either of you?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Robert, the next step in this process, I believe, is for the commission to make a motion and approve the minutes to go forward to the planning department. Is that correct?
Well, before we do that, did we actually hold the public hearing? Did we say we're going to have a public hearing? Do we need to do that?
Well, there's, the public that's here has been asked if they would like to speak. I guess, I guess the chairman didn't say the words, "Open the public hearing and close the public hearing," but I think that's happened.
That has happened. We have opened it and we have closed it. So thank you.
And-
I'm new at this, so I'm not getting this exactly correct.
Of course, perfect. My only question would, I think we would be ready for a motion to approve these and pass them on to planning commission, with the exception of whether we want to look at the language in that one part about what the secretary, what the secretary of the interior, is that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And if that's the case, probably we should find that data circulated, and then maybe discuss that at our next meeting.
Okay.
It could be hard to approve these and send them on subject to that, because there are some things where you got a yes or no someplace, you can do that, and, you know, maybe staff can make that determination. But on this one, that probably you folks need to look at that language and consider.
I don't think it would be necessary to have one of those smaller subcommittee meetings, though, to discuss. I think we can bring that up before the entire commission.
I would think.
I don't see scheduling that would be necessary.
Or perhaps by emailing.
Well, then, no, we need to have a public meeting. We can circulate, once we find the material, we can circulate it to everybody to look at, but then it needs to be discussed at a public meeting.
Yeah. I do have just a couple more questions. They're both on page 11 of the-
Which document?
Guidelines for alterations. And at the bottom of the page, the last paragraph, since construction-
Which page?
Uh, page 11. Since construction in the historic district has taken place continuously from the late, or from the early 19th century through the late 20th, I think it's actually taken place through the present. Because we have had construction taking place in the historic district since the year 2000. So, and this document will be in place for 10 years now, and there will be construction going on through the present, no matter when you read this.
I hope we're getting it right, so it'll be through the 22nd century, we'll have to change it again, et cetera.
If you say present, that covers you.
Present, that covers you safely.
Right.
I think, too, it was my underst, I guess my sense in reading this, and we were looking at it, is that we're thinking about the original construction of houses, not necessarily the remodeling.
There was a house on Main Street that was built around 2000 or later, at First Avenue and Main Street.
Well, and there is a vacant lot that someone is grading.
Yeah, that's going to be built.
I think he's got a valid point, that we ought to change it to the present.
Or simply delete that and say it has taken place continuously from the early 19th century.
Yes.
Right. Yeah, that would be fine.
There we go.
I would agree.
And then, of course, my other question goes back to fences. You knew you weren't going to get by with me asking about fences.
I was hoping you weren't going to be here today. Go ahead.
And, but as I read it again, though, if you go back to page 10, and it talks about accessory structures related to buildings should be visually compatible, and then it talks about fences should conform with existing structures, walls are generally not present in historic district, although we do seem to look at them quite often. So I don't know if that it's actually the case, that they're generally not present, but then, and they should, there's a preferred type of fence, and of course, I think that the preferred type of fence would be that which was historic to the place. It may or may not have been wrought iron, or the, you know, in some cases, it may be the dreaded chain link, which is the historic feature. And so that's all I would, I would suggest, is that, for example, if we had a president who lived on Main Street at some point in the 1940s, whose house had a chain link fence around it, and someone were restoring that house, we would, I think, allow them to have a chain link fence, if that were a part of that property historically.
Well, great thing is, I don't think that's going to come up. We do know that there is historic, there is, there is chain link in the district.
Yes.
And I believe Marie Miller has a stretch in the back that I believe had, a tree fell on a section, and we allowed her to replace that.
That's, that's what I'm suggesting, is that if it were there historically, then if we're, you know, trying to retain the historic character, then that is a part of the historic character. However, if someone were to build a new house, then we might not permit historic, or permit chain link fence to be constructed in a, in a-
Well, I look at that a little, a little different way. I think if you go back to, like, when our house was built in 1900, there was no fences. So historically, there wasn't a fence. Now, as time went on, and people wanted a little more privacy, fences went up, and some of those were chain linked, but they weren't necessarily historic to the, to building of the property, they weren't to the building of the property. So I, I really think that adding chain link fences anywhere in the zone, in the historic zone, is inappropriate. We need to leave it alone.
That's, that's not how, that's not what I'm saying. I think, I think I'm saying that if it's there, if it was there historically, and, you know, I don't, I can't say when chain link fence was first introduced, but if fences weren't there historically, including wooden fences or any other type-
But I hear what you're saying, but what we're saying is that it's inappropriate. It's not saying we're not going to allow it, it's just saying it's inappropriate. Doesn't say you can't do it. Chain link fences cannot be installed.
Should it say generally inappropriate? Chain link fences are usually, or generally-
You're thinking that if Thomas Jefferson lived there, and you were going to restore his house, and it had historic chain link fence, that we would allow chain link fence?
I would think so.
Well, but we know, again, it says it's inappropriate, it's not saying we won't allow it, we're saying it's inappropriate.
Well, I, there might be another way of saying that, if, you know, I-
Would we not operate under the assumption that any chain link fence that was in place prior to 1986 can be maintained?
Can be maintained. Yes. He's saying, if it was there at one point and gone now, but the guy had such historical importance, I'm interpreting what you're saying.
Yeah.
That, that you would, we would allow them to put it back.
Well, if they prove that, I mean- Well, I think we're dealing in the minutia here.
Yeah.
Well, we're government, that's what we're saying.
I don't think this language denies them the possibility of doing it. They would have to present their case.
Okay.
It'd be a case, case by case situation.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Does that satisfy you?
If FDR came through for a visit, and-
The chair would welcome a motion to adjourn.
It's coming.
Don't we have to make a motion to?
No, I'm sure, I'm sure. How would you prefer to see it clarified?
I think, you know, when we describe it, depending on how you interpret this whole section, if it's talking about the installation of new fence that was not there historically, then certainly we can take an aesthetic point of view. But then that's what we are doing here, it's not a historic point of view. Because if we're permitting fences that were not present historically, but they're aesthetically pleasing to our sensibility, then that's different from, you know, treating it as a historic district, in which certain features give the place its character. So-
I think that's the beauty of these regulations, is they're workable, they're allowable.
Right.
I mean, if other regulations are, they're not admissible or appropriate, period. Here, we're saying, well, let's, let's talk about it.
Well, we, we talked about the cement board in a slightly different way, and, and the language there is different. And if you go back on page nine, it says, "Cement fiber board siding may be approved." So that's another way of saying the same thing, as opposed to saying something's inappropriate. It may be approved, or it may not be. Certain type of fence may be approved, or it may not be. And so that's another, and the attorney will have to give us the legal lowdown on that.
Adding the word generally.
Well, that was a suggestion that would give us, you know, perhaps some more inherent flexibility by the language, to say they're generally inappropriate, and in a particular circumstance, we might be convinced that it is appropriate. We, you might be convinced it's appropriate. Now, I think that a little bit the other side on hardy board, we all know there are problems with wood siding, and there's some disfavor for vinyl siding, but if it's not brick or stone, that a hardy plank, hardy board type of material that looks a lot like wood, and looking at the realities of the marketplace and of construction, that that's something that generally, probably, we would favor. Generally, we probably would not favor chain link fences, to say, yes. But that would clearly, I think, if we added the word generally, or normally, or usually, we would at least give ourselves certainly the out that it could, that someone could convince us that in this particular circumstance, it is appropriate.
Well, you could go back to the sentence that was stricken, take out the word would or, and go, "Generally, chain link fences on the front of the lot should be avoided." Or just say, "Generally, chain link fences should be avoided." That doesn't prohibit it.
And I'm not suggesting that somebody's going to, that, that we would approve a chain link fence that comes in, which wasn't there historically. However, we have approved other types of fences which are not historic to come in. So, so that's an aesthetic judgment, not a historic judgment. That's, that's what I'm getting at. And because our, to our sensibility, a chain link fence is not as attractive as a wooden fence or a stone fence. But, you know, so that's, that's also a class issue in some cases, where some people can afford a nicer fence than others, and so it's just something to think about, is all.
Well, we could all chew on that while we chew on the secretary of the interiors, or interior department's language, and see what we can come up with by next time. So I suppose a motion to defer action on this until the next meeting would probably be appropriate, if that's the commission's choice.
I would agree, yeah. Do we have a motion then from the commission?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion regarding that? If not, all those in favor of tabling a final decision on these documents until the next meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, then that is passed. Thank you. Robert, is there anything else?
I don't have anything else.
You've, you've had enough with this.
I didn't want to phrase it that way, even.
If not, the chair would welcome a motion to, to stop this meeting and go on about our day.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor of the meeting adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.